Everybody, this is the Board of County Commissioners meeting. This time, we're going to do the invocation and pledge. I'll be doing the invocation today, so if you would bow your head. Before we come to you today with heavy hearts, we ask that you keep the Orman family and the Peeler family in your arm of comfort and understanding today. We're dealing with the loss of family members, fathers, mothers, brothers, and sisters. But we ask that you be with them as they go through this. It's always hard on the family. As we all know, we've been through it before, and it's a time where we're really having a hard time understanding stuff. If you would keep them, everybody would keep them in your prayers, we'd appreciate it. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, David, do we have any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. We have three additions and one item to pull from the consent agenda. The additions are a request for additional state appropriation law enforcement salary funding sheriff's office. It's basically a budget amendment for state, coming effective July 1. We'll talk about it in the end. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. First item is a budget amendment to the sheriff's office for the state appropriation of additional funding to put that first quarter allotment in the sheriff's office budget.
And where do you want to put that on the agenda?
It'll be at the very end.
Very end, okay.
There is also the county of the quarter recognition, and then also a, we'd like to have a call for an adoption hearing for the fair housing ordinance to be placed at the next meeting in this month, which I believe is the 20th.
Is that going to be at the end also?
We can do that at the end also. And then finally, when you get to the consent, we're asking you to pull consent item number seven.
Number what?
Poll for discussion consent item number seven.
You said number five?
Seven, number seven.
Okay.
Where do you want that at?
Under Mr. Kirby.
Okay. All right, so this time I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Like sign. Okay, at this time, we'll ask Mr. Philip Mobley, Pastor Philip Mobley, to come up for his presentation from North Star.
My name is Philip Mobley. I'm the manager of the North Star Family Resource Center. And before we go into my part of the presentation, I wanted to introduce the director of the resource centers for Partnership for Strong Families and director of all of the resource centers that we have. And Stacy will come, Stacy Merritt will come and talk about our resource centers and the resource centers, the purpose and how we're structured. Then I'll come back and talk about some of the local achievements and some things that we're doing at North Star. At this time, Stacy will come forward.
Good morning, and thank you for letting us share with you this morning. I thought we would start with just a brief overview of Partnership for Strong Families, who operates the North Star Family Resource Center. So Partnership for Strong Families was opened in 2003, and that was in response to the privatization of child welfare services within the state of Florida. We are currently celebrating our 20th year of operation. Part of what Partnership does with child welfare services, our full scope of services, starts with primary prevention, which is the work that we do through the resource centers such as North Star, but it also goes all the way through foster care and adoption. So we are the lead child welfare agency for 13 counties in north central Florida, which does include Columbia County. The resource centers were opened as a result of our desire to safely reduce the number of children entering into out-of-home care. And our first site, Library Partnership, which you can see in the PowerPoint, was opened in 2009. Since that time, we have opened four additional locations. We have three locations that are in Gainesville, one located in Chiefland, which was our first rural location, and then most recently in North Star Family Resource Center, which we opened in 2021 as a result of some federal grant funding. So our resource center model, since we started in 2009, has become nationally recognized. We have the honor of hosting other states here at our locations to give tours and share about our model, and also we're able to do peer learning by going to other areas to learn more about how we can improve and do better. Our framework, we use the Strengthening Families Protective Factors framework as part of our model. This is a research-informed framework, and it, this research supports the fact that when protective factors are present in families, it reduces the risk of child abuse and neglect. So you can see the five protective factors. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I will say that every service and support that we offer through North Star and our other family resource centers are tied to one of these five protective factors, and they are also provided free to the community as a result of a number of community partnerships. So let's see. The Community Collaborations to Strengthen Families grant, this is a federal grant provided through the Children's Bureau. We were one of nine awardees of this grant, and it helps us to further evaluate our resource center model to see if we're having the impact that we think we are having on families, but it also, more importantly for today, it allowed us to open North Star Family Resource Center. So this funding, we will have through September 30 of 2024, and at this time, we are diligently working on sustainability plans for the site. Right now, 100% of North Star is funded through this grant as far as operations, and then we depend on community partners, which Phil will talk a little bit more about later, for our services and supports that are offered as well. I'm going to turn it over to Phil.
So as Stacy mentioned, all of the services that we provide, and the real services that we provide in North Star, those services are related to protective factors. One of the things that a lot of times people think when people come and see us, that we're giving out, handing them money or handing them, we're not. What we're doing, sometimes those concrete services are needed, and we evaluate those, and we give those services out, but behind that is that we are trying to tie in what protective factors, it's the parent resiliency, or whatever, whatever the issue parents have, we try to work with them to help them. Given a point, a case in point, a young lady came to us Monday, and she's having some real issues. We are working with her now to teach her how to budget and teach her how to manage her money, to teach her how to do the things that she needs where she can be successful. And she asked for that. As we discussed it with her, she asked, "I need help." And because she said we need help, we find the resources to help her become successful with managing her children and managing their budgets. So that's what we're doing. What we try to do is we try to make sure that families have access, immediate access to healthy foods. We, Florida Blue, as well as, we actually have a grant, we apply for Florida Blue for actually expanding our food choices and our pantries and helping people have access to healthy foods. We have a closed pantry, and we have a lot of clothes for women, and we find, women donate all their clothes to us, but men, we struggle sometime with clothes for men and boys. But people come in, they use the computers, they come in, and we help people with job skills. We have a direct relationship with Florida Crown. In fact, when someone comes in my office and says they need a job, we pick up the phone, call Florida Crown. Most of the time, they will send one of their people there with us and help that person get registered for Florida Crown and get set up where they can start looking for jobs. We, Florida Blue has sponsored our health fair every year, and they will be sponsoring the health fair this year. Last couple of years, we've worked with the barbers, the local barbers, and we provided backpacks and school supplies. Last year, we gave out over 500 backpacks and school supplies. We're planning to do that at the end of this month, Sunday. It usually happens on the, it will be Sunday, June 30. We will have start at 3:00, 3:00 to 6:00, and I tell you, at 2:00, the lines will be out the street. We also have children program, we have, we really focus on programs for children. We have our after-school program where we're working with kids. Last year, we had, we were scheduled, we were budgeted to do 15 kids, and we had about 20 kids in that school program last year because of the need. Again, all of our services that we provide to the community, they are free of charges, and we ask, no, we do not require them to pay any, anything for our services. And the way that happens is we have partnered with over 30 community partners, and our partnership is continuing to grow. We have some very strong partnerships. We think, and one reason why we wanted to come here and talk with you, because you are a partner for us. Because of the county, this center works, and we thank you for being a partner. But we have other partners like Florida Crown, Florida Gateway. In fact, Florida Gateway provided the tutors last year for our homework help. Florida Blue, as well as Publix and Panera's and Walmart, and we can just go on and on and name some of those partners that we have established in the last two years that we've been in existence, and those partnerships continue to grow, and we think, we're so thankful for that. We can go to the next one. So when you look at, we do not serve just one demographic. We find ourselves serving people all over this community, and even people come to us that's outside of this community. But our focus is really trying to service the people that are in the community. We see our visitors that have come to the center. If you look at the racial makeup, we, 74% of the folks that have come are African-American, but 15% are white and then other ethnicities that come as well. As well as age, we see that we have a real span of ages from low kids all the way to older people, and so that works well for us. So we want to make sure that we continue to provide those services for everyone that comes and visit us. And also, when we look at the demographics of the number of people that we serve this year, since we've been open, our demographics has been across the community. 32205 is the main number of people we service, but we've had people that come from us from Lulu all the way to Fort White. So we, we're helping people, the word about North Star is getting out, and they're coming to say, "How can you help me?" And then we're working on how to continue to serve those individuals. Okay. I'll give you a couple of success stories that we talk about and things that we wanted to contend, and these are just anecdotal. We had a mother who recently came to us, and this happened just two weeks ago. A mother came to us, and we've been working with this mother for years, and she was in a very domestic violence situation. We connected her with her family in Philadelphia. We talked to her mother in Philadelphia. We found that the best situation for her was to get her to her family. She was trying to deal with some things here. We actually bought her a bus ticket. We got her and her two children, and we put them on the bus, and we sent them to Philadelphia and made sure that she was connected with her family. We followed up with that, and now she's doing, she's there in a stable environment. She's out of that domestic violence situation that she's in. So working, now those situations sometimes take us a lot of time. We're down in, we're, I'd say, we're getting our hands dirty in the ground, really working with these families, trying to figure out what's going on, because they'll come to us and ask for one thing, and as we talk with them, we find out they need something else. And what we're trying to do is help them long-term be successful. We had, at the beginning of the summer, we had a 19-year-old man came to us, young boy. He came to us, and he is academically, he was sound. He had, his mother was, after he graduated from high school, pretty much told him he was out of there, and so he was homeless. And he went to Gainesville, and he was in a homeless shelter, got beat up in a homeless shelter. And as he was sitting there talking to me, I asked him what he wanted to do, and he said, "I really want to go to college." We called Travis George. Travis George came in, Travis George worked with him, got him accepted at Florida Gateway. He's accepted at Florida Gateway. He's gotten scholarships, financial aid to go to Florida Gateway. The only thing we're working on right now is getting him in the dorm. We found him a place to stay until the dorm opened. And so working with him and giving him what he needs, the support he needed, and we're still supporting him, not with financial support. He comes and he just talks about what he's going through and what he needs. We call him, check on him, make sure that he stays, his mind stays right, that he's going to be a successful young man. The last one I just want to talk about is our homework help. I said we had over 20 kids in our homework help. Two of those young kids invited me to come to their awards program. And I went to their awards program, and I had one young man had perfect attendance for the whole year, and was, and he was, he received the award for the, the reading award they get, because he read the most number of books in his school. So what we're seeing is we're working with these kids, helping them become not, and so we want to work with kids at a younger age to help shape them, and then we want to work with them as they continue to grow. We have other programs that we're trying to actually promote, to implement, a voice to men supposedly, to work with boys, all of these things to be able to help our families be successful and to help change the dynamics that's happening with them and their families. So we thank you for, I think, that's the last one, right? Yeah. So we thank you for just letting us come, and the thing I wanted to make sure when you understood, when you think about North Star, because many times people think about North Star, and they look at us, look at Richardson, and they put us together. And we are there, and we are working together. We are working together. But North Star and Richardson are two separate entities working together for a common solution. But we just wanted to just make sure that you understood where we are, just to thank you for being a partner, and thank you for the support that you've given us in the past, and we just want to be able to continue our partnership for a long time. Any questions?
Go back to the slide there where it showed the percentages, if you would. Okay, visitors by age, 18, 45, 32%. What are some of the issues that you're seeing when these people come to you for help? I mean, there's some drugs and one thing or another, or?
Well, usually, people won't come to us and say they have drugs. Where people come is, people will come, they, we have people that come that need Pampers, they need baby supplies, they need clothing, they need financial assistance because they have power. The city will send people, they go to the city, and their water's been turned off, about to be turned off, they will send them to North Star. So there's a network of folks that help people, and so we have people to come because they're in a crisis, and most people's in crisis. We have, we have just a vast number of women in Lake City that are sleeping in their cars. A lot of people sleeping in cars, and so when they hear about us, they come to us, people refer to them, us to them, or whatever. So we have people that come for food, we have people come for clothes, we have, every Tuesday, Panera's gives us bread, pastries. We put that, those pastries are given out free. So people come to get pastries for us, from us. We have people that, every morning, they go and walk with us. We walk through the community every morning. The sheriff department walks with us every morning, on Friday morning. So we walk through the community. So all of those things that we do, people come and use the computer. It's just, there's a lot of people just say, "I need to use the computer," and they come and use the computer. We have some people, we have some folks that are working on GED, they come and say, "I need help." And somehow, somebody found that I have, my degree was in math, so people come and say, "I want you to come help me with math." So we help people with math, any type of services people need. So the services, the real services are great, but thank you.
Thank you. Those.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to add very quickly, another part of our model and kind of what we do, because I know you mentioned substance abuse, and it is a little touchier, because I think the relationship really has to be there before somebody's going to discuss that with you. But we do also, outside of the community partners we have listed, we are partners with Meridian Behavioral Healthcare, CDF, and a lot of others throughout the community. So we are also able to kind of give warm handoffs to those agencies. So if there are mental health needs, we are referring them. We're not the experts in that, but we're going to refer them and connect them with those agencies as well.
And actually, Meridian comes once a month, on this last, the fourth Monday, the fourth Wednesday of each month, Meridian actually sets up an office and office space, as well as DCF. Every other week, the second and the fourth Wednesday, no, every Wednesday, every Tuesday, I'm sorry, every Tuesday, DCF is actually in our office. So they see, so folks are coming in, and they're going directly to DCF and getting the services they need.
So if you've got someone in your community, that their mother, father has, "Hey, you've done your thing here, you got to go." That's something that you help, that's what I kind of understand.
Yeah.
So I do have some of that in mind.
Yeah. And so, and so a lot, and a lot of times what we're doing, we're working with the faith organizations and being able to help put some of the young people, some people that we get in situations, they have nowhere to go. We're working with faith organizations. We, we've actually, they put somebody in a hotel a couple of nights. We can't do hotels because that's a short-term solution. We're trying to figure out how to figure out a long-term solution for them. But there are some people we just can't, I mean, it's, the need is so great out there, and it's getting worse, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Mobley.
Thank you, Pastor Mobley.
Joe, can I get approval for the consent agenda minus number seven? We pulled it. Get a motion to approve it?
Motion. So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Motion clear. Okay, Joe.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This morning, for the board's consideration, is a memorandum of understanding that we also refer to as a management control agreement between the Plumb County Sheriff's Office, the Lake City Police Department, and the county. As everyone knows, we're working very hard towards combining dispatch, and this is one of a series of agreements that's necessary. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the FBI provide high levels of criminal justice information access to our local law enforcement agencies. And so when you combine those agencies under a common umbrella, it's very important to the FDLE particularly, that that information is sort of under lock and key. And I think that kind of makes sense to everybody. You don't just want any employee to be able to walk in and pull that information. And so the FDLE asked us to consider and gave us a proposal for a management control agreement, and that's what this is. For combined communications, we're going to have a series of four agreements. This is the third of those agreements. You've already done a backup PSAP agreement with the city that's in place that provides if, for some reason, our PSAP were destroyed, we'd have somewhere else to go. We already have a radio subscriber agreement that y'all approved some time ago, I think a couple of years ago. This is the third agreement. There will still be another agreement that'll deal with more of the nuts and bolts of the actual combined center itself. Does that make sense to everybody? And so this agreement is necessary because we have to, and again, I think the chief and the sheriff are here, and I know Mr. Brazil's in the back, if I get any of these technical details wrong. But they have to do a process where they combine their CAD systems, right? Their map, you know, where they're able to know where to go and all that kind of stuff. They want to combine all that for dispatch. That requires an outside vendor to facilitate that. It's going to take that vendor about 90 days. The vendor can't proceed until FDLE gives the go-ahead. FDLE won't give the go-ahead without a management control agreement. So that's where the time sensitivity element comes in, if you want to make October 1st. With all that said, we are recommending approval. There was a significant process involved here, multiple meetings. We met with FDLE, we met with all the agencies, we circulated numerous drafts. I do understand, from talking to Mr. Kraus, that the most recent draft was not included with your agenda packet. That's an unfortunate omission. However, the product that you see that was provided to you is the product of the different agencies, attorneys, and personnel working together to get that done. If you have any questions or concerns for me with respect to the agreement itself, I'm happy to answer them. And again, I believe the sheriff, the chief, and Mr. Brazil are here today to answer any technical questions y'all might have.
Joe, Chair. Joe, I want to ask you something about the 120 days, and you read about it, about, you know, when we have these agreements, that somebody can back out, or I read how that reads. It just scares me because, you know, we're usually the one, the senior partner, putting up all the money and spending everything, and then all of a sudden, somebody says, "Oh, we don't want to do this anymore." It's easy to drop out when you don't have any money in the kitty. So that concerns me.
Right.
Because we've had issues with that lately, you know?
Yes, sir, and that's definitely a point of discussion in the communication, in the combined communications center meetings. That'll be a part of the next agreement, because again, that'll be more of the nuts and bolts of the actual moving people around, things like that. I can speak for what I've seen in the meetings. I believe everyone is in agreement that at this point, we're so, you know, everybody's going to have to have skin in the game. So there will be a penalty for breaking that interlocal. The one that was done, gosh, it's probably been 10 years ago now, that the city backed out of in the last minute, did not have a penalty clause. And so we are absolutely, mutually, right? If we back out, the other folks who put their money in should get, you know, something back.
Seems like backing out's becoming a little bit of a thing lately, so I want to make sure that we cover ourselves.
Well, and again, to satisfy the board, the representation from the city has been in uniform course, that they would like to see this go forward. We haven't seen much in the way of any objections other than just making sure the technical boxes get ticked. Obviously, Chief Butler, the law enforcement agencies get audited by FDLE, right? And FDLE wants to make sure they're taking really careful control and they're maintaining command authority with respect to any information that's entrusted to them. That's where they don't want to get sideways. They don't want to fail an FDLE. So Chief Butler's concerns kind of sounded from there. Sheriff Hunter's concerns, all came from that place with respect to this particular agreement. So again, in terms of fear of anybody backing out, you know, this will mark three-quarters of the way there in terms of actual signed agreements, and then the last one will be the one that, you know, we hope we can put in place and have up and running in October.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So following what Joel said, this agreement has to be in place before we can merge the CAD system. Once this is in place, we'll then merge the CAD systems. Records management systems will stay separate. That will give the agencies two or three months to work out all the kinks and things that come when you merge CAD systems. It's not just a smooth, seamless process. While they're moving forward with merging the CAD systems and testing it out, making sure there's no bugs, we'll work on the interlocal agreement. sure there's no bugs, we'll work on the interlocal agreement for the actual full details. That will come back to this board at some point in the future, once we know everything works and everything's in place.
I guess my question would be, why, why is there even a termination to end this? If that's the case? I mean, I'm just saying, you know, why put a termination clause in here?
We, we just, as a matter of course, we generally provide for some means of termination for any interlocal agreement, you know, because you got these different agencies involved. Obviously, if we could put a lock on it and say that it can never be broken, we would do that. If you don't put anything at all in there, the presumption's gonna be that nobody intended to bind anything to anything, right? So, you know, you can just walk away whenever you want. So we have to have some termination language. The 120 days kinda gives a nice, long window. I will say that, based on how long it takes to combine the CAD, I don't know if it's as easy a process to separate them. But, but that's why it's in there. It's to make sure we check that box from a contractual standpoint. But if the board's not satisfied with 120 days, we can go 180. You know, we chose 120, because that's around four months, gives a nice, long window.
Well, a budget year is 180. I think it should be at least a budget year for that termination.
I mean.
If there's got to be a termination clause in there, it shouldn't be able to take place during a budget. It should have to happen, it should have to give notice before the next budget. I mean, you know, this is not a cheap endeavor. I mean, it's, you know, county's fixing to invest somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 to combine this 911. And it seems like these interlocal agreements, first time somebody gets their feelings hurt, they just wanna jump out, you know what I'm saying? And that's just not the way, to me, to do business.
Well, and this one's not as easy to get out of, because again, you've got the merged computer system in terms of the CAD, you've got the FDLE regulations that kind of tie you together. It's not something that's easy to unravel.
Yeah. And just to be clear, I mean, it's similar to an interlocal agreement, but it's really, from FDLE's perspective, it's that management control. This is really about the criminal justice information. But to Commissioner Ford's point, if you wanna change that 120 to 360, you know, that's a year. So you would never have a risk of entering a budget year and suffering an immediate termination, you know? Because even at 180 days, that's only six months, that'll get you out in six months. So it's not unusual, say 360, if that's the board's preference, it's an easy change. We would just need to get, you know, ratification from the city on it. I don't know if the gentleman in the audience would have any comment on that, but if that's the board's preference, it's a.
Well, that's just my thoughts. I don't know where the rest of the board is. I don't know what their thoughts are. But that was my thoughts when I read this. I was quarter, I guess I read the same thing.
You've been dealing with this thing for seven years. So a year would be out of question. It just, I think a year's the way to do it, because, like you said, we back, somebody backs out on us, and we're stuck with a problem in the budget, you know? We gotta, gotta have a little heads up, you know?
And mostly, mostly, this is directed to the city, correct?
No, sir. This is.
No, everybody's. It's between the law enforcement.
This is mostly relevant to our law enforcement agencies, because again, they have that accountability to FDLE. And so when you bring outside parties to the table, county employees, vendors, you'll notice there's a lot of discussion about how vendors have to be vetted. Anytime there's the risk that those outside folks could have contact with this system, FDLE wants these protocols in place. So this is really, it's almost like policies and procedures, right? If we're gonna put our machines and our systems under the roof with people who are not employees of the sheriff's office or the police department, these are the protocols. And FDLE, I wanna be very clear, FDLE gave us the building blocks for this. They said, this is what needs to be in there. And then we worked with the agencies and with county staff to tailor-fit that to our situation.
And the CAD system, everybody will be using, will all be from the sheriff's network. So the sheriff plays a major role.
I have one comment card on this, Stu. You wanna come up this time?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I only have two questions. In order to this agreement, I don't know if there's a problem with calling the sheriff the sheriff. The Columbia County Sheriff's Office is also called the Oversight Agency. I just wonder why it's either the sheriff, Mr. Sheriff, everybody knows who that is. I keep forgetting who that was. As far as termination, once you get into this agreement, it's almost impossible to terminate. I don't even know why there's a termination clause in it. I listened carefully to what the chairman said. The county's invested a lot of money in this, and the county's invested a lot of money over the time since 2010, when the agreement went sideways, because people couldn't get along. Millions and millions of dollars were spent on dual communications between, from the city and the county agencies. But I do have a question, that I had to speed read this this morning, because this didn't get on until the 12th hour. I still don't understand how the city approved it without ever seeing it. It says the OA, and that's the Oversight Agency, which is the sheriff, any sheriff, not just this sheriff, it's whatever sheriff gets elected, will have the final approval for all personnel working in dispatch. I don't understand that. We have a qualified dispatch head, who is formerly with the police, with the sheriff's office, is highly knowledgeable about dispatch. And I'm just wondering, how that's going to work, Mr. Chairman? Is that, does the Tom Brazil now hire somebody and everything? How does that do? He's gotta send the applications, he's gotta have the sheriff double-check the background checks. Given the city, it doesn't make a difference, they don't believe in background checks, but the county does. Either, either you got a dispatch guy who's in charge, who it seemed to make sense, or he's not. Personnel is a big deal when it comes to hiring these people, it's a very, can be a very stressful job. So I would just like, maybe the sheriff could explain that, or you guys could explain that. I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think everything that FDLD does is a good idea. So I would just ask the board to consider that. You got a head of dispatch, he's either head of dispatcher or he's not. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to answer a part of that. The way the hiring process goes, the sheriff is part of the hiring process with Mr. Brazil. He certainly can say, that person is not going in there. Obviously, the sheriff does the background checks. If he doesn't pass the background checks, they don't go in there. So he has a voice in the hiring process.
He's also over the security of that CAD system.
Sure. Right. He's responsible for the security of the system.
From the, from the meetings I, we attended, from what I understand, the sheriff is responsible for the, for the CAD system. Basically, he owns the CAD system, and it's, for the security of the CAD system, he's responsible for that. Sheriff, would you like to add anything to that?
Mr. Chair, while the sheriff's coming up, the Oversight Agency terminology, and LASSO, and FAC, and all that stuff, these are terms that are used by FDLE, so they need to be able to identify who that is.
Right.
And so we have two law enforcement agencies, CCSO and LCPD. But of those two, the sheriff is the OA. And so FDLE needs to know that, because there's some things they're only gonna ask the OA. Well, I'm very appreciative that we've gotten this far in this process. It has been a long haul. You know, when we talked, a long time ago, we talked about having a combined communication center, and all of us working together. Everybody's got individual responsibilities and liabilities that are associated with their, with their agencies. When you look at the communications, and it's, you know, the way it's broken out, as y'all know, the 911 call-taking, by statute, you guys are responsible for that, and the funding that goes with that. On the law enforcement dispatch side, law enforcement's responsible for that. The answer to the question about the, you know, having the final say on that, we've done a real good job with having a committee on the hiring, you know, for the hiring process out there. And to have somebody who is over a part of your organization that is so vital, and you're just gonna carbonch, say, do what you want out there, any of you guys sitting there would not accept that. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes with intelligence, with doing dispatching, the information that can and cannot be released by Florida statute, you know, 119, public records request, there's things that we may have ongoing investigations. And Tom does a great job out there operating the dispatch center. I'll give him credit for that. And yes, he does have a law enforcement background, but he's not been in, in the law enforcement arena, you know, full-time in quite a while. And we have current activities that go on that he may not be aware of. So when we're looking at hiring employees, also too, it may not pop up in their background, but there may be some things that have happened in that person's life, or whatever, that they may not be a good fit to be employed at the 911 center. So, yes, I'm gonna reserve that. Of course, by statute, I am required to do that, and have a say in that. And I think that the sheriff's office, whoever's standing here, whoever's in this position, should retain that, to have oversight of who's gonna be employed out there. And in conjunction with, you know, the chief and I've had, we're working very well together now. We've had a lot of discussion about the hiring process, and they're incorporated into this process. And I think we get a better product when we all come together and agree, this is a person that should be, be working in our dispatch center. So, that's, you know, I didn't come up with this, these are the statutory guidelines. And I can tell you right now, going through this last four years with the changeover from the FCIC, NCIC, to the fibers and the nibbers process, this has been a nationwide push, and this thing's taken four years. And I actually sat on the state committee with that, to watch that process go over, where now, instead of having seven vital statistic crimes they use to determine our crime rates, or our uniform crime reporting, now they'll be using 54. So there's a lot of changes that go on. The CAD system, access to our CAD system with employees out there, you gotta be careful who has access to that intelligence or to that information, because we do have countermeasures going on, you know, counterintelligence going on all the time with our operations. So it's, it's very important. And whether you like me or not, whoever's, or whoever's sitting in here, it's part of my responsibility, and I take it very seriously. And thank y'all for what y'all've done so far. We're, we're here, this is one of the main proposals that has to be done, are these management control agreements. It's required by FDLE. We can't move forward without approving this. And there's been a lot of work, and not only from the law enforcement side, but we've worked in conjunction, so everybody has a voice out there. And we're all working together on these committees. We've met every week for the last, I don't know how long, Commissioner Ford, nine months? 10 months? And we're as close as we've ever been to having a true combined dispatch.
And I'll just add, you know, Columbia County's growing, the city's growing.
Sure.
And this is part of preparing for the future. I tell you, this is, this, I think everybody stated, this started 10 years ago, or 11 years ago, something like that, and probably should've been done at that time, but for some reason, it didn't happen. And I think it's, now it's more imperative than ever that we, that we get this behind us and get this.
The other side of this too. The other side of this too, is that the workload out there, 75% of it is law enforcement-related. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's just a fact. And, you know, and it's, it's a bit different on dispatching the law enforcement assets than it is a fire EMS. And, you know, we've taken on all of the, when you'll start talking about the behind-the-scenes things, all the IT, you know, we're going to a technological world now. And there's a lot of moving pieces behind the scenes with these radios, with the IT stuff. And we've taken that on with the sheriff's office, and we're just trying to keep up with the shifting times.
Yeah. Big part of our job, as well as yours, of the safety.
Sure.
And this is, this is part of, of the safety.
And, you know, sitting here, listening to y'all talking, Rocky, it's a good feeling to me that, and Ron says it too, this should've been done 10 or 15 years ago, and we've done a bunch of stuff in the last two or three years, that should've been, I hear that all the time from the guys that have been here longer than me, well, this should've been done 10 years ago. And that's a good feeling, I think we're going in the right way, we're on the right track in this county, doing this stuff.
But I will say this, over these last few years, when we talk about throwing something out there, we've spent millions and millions, we haven't spent millions and millions at dispatch. We've hopped, we've kinda hopped along, some of the things that were, we asked for early on, you know, it was too much, it cost too much. Back then, there were some of it, you know, they were trying to save money. I get it. But, you know, we asked for some things way back when, the price tag was too much, we were told, no, we'll, we'll do these things. Now those are resurfacing again. And I agree, you know, should've been done a long time ago, but, you know, you gotta go with the times you're in and live within your means. And I think we've done a very good job of that with the sheriff's office, of trying to work with what we've been provided. And I'm gonna push right on and ask for things, because I do believe in public safety. And I do try to put the dollars where we get the best return on those. And communications is a big, big deal. Big part of our, it's a vital part of our operation.
It haven't only been the price tag, why it haven't happened, it's been personalities, why it not happened. So let's just, just call a ace, a seven, a spade, a spade. It's a combination of a lot of things that have went on, and a lot of it been personalities.
Any more questions for the sheriff?
I don't, I don't know who, I think mine's directed to the chief here, Chair, if I may. On section four.
You said the chief?
I get, let me read it to you, and you can jump up here if you want to. But it says here, if I'm reading this thing correctly here, it says the OA's provision of a full-time liaison, which I think you, Tom, and the sheriff has all agreed that nobody has a problem with a liaison being present in the facility. But it goes on to say here, is material consideration of the LCPD in entering into this agreement? Clarify that.
Part of the agreement is the sheriff's office will be the Oversight Agency, which means I'm entrusting the sheriff to safeguard the police department's securitization information. We haven't been out there, I don't know the operations of the dispatch center. Speaking with the sheriff, he feels in order to complete the agreement that he has with me, is that he needs a full-time person out there. I'm not gonna disagree with him. But the big thing is, we need someone to oversight and to maintain control of that server and that information. And if the sheriff feels that's a full-time position, I'm gonna defer to him. He knows what his people have to do out there, so I agree with him.
When you say oversight of the server, doesn't the sheriff's office already have an individual that does that?
I don't know his operations.
I can speak to that. When we talk about the oversight of the CAD system and all that, yes. And when I said earlier about we've accepted all of the IT slice, we're actually doing all the radios for the fire and the EMS, and I've taken that on, and at this point, haven't, haven't asked for any additional funding for that. The other side of this is, is that once we totally combine with PD, having a person out there throughout the day is very beneficial. And, you know, the day-to-day operations of dispatch, having somebody out there, first off, if I have a deputy out there, or a person out there, they're armed, it does provide security for the, for the facility. And I've had, you know, Tom's okay with this, he understands the need for it. When we have operations going on, you know, like Monday, we had a manhunt out there, it's good to have a law enforcement perspective, somebody who's working with us to where that we can actually have that person in the facility to help us coordinate some of those operations. You see how busy it gets, Commissioner Ford, you, you came out on a manhunt with us one time, and you see that reaching back to get assets here, when we're, I'm trying to get outside agencies here, and I've got somebody that can talk the talk in that facility that can help facilitate that. Dispatchers do a good job, but they don't look at it from the same perspective as what we do. The other thing with having that person out there would be that they can help assist with the radio stuff. Y'all don't, y'all, I don't think y'all understand the programming and the, and the actual hands-on that goes on with, you know, the radios within, within our agency. You know, when we move people around, or we bring somebody on, we have to issue them radios, they, you know, we've talked about the security for the radios, for the, for uh, for the frequencies, you know, having those things encrypted. Uh, there's a lot that goes on behind that. Y'all have talked about, uh, Lawrence needing this another person. This would be somebody that would work directly with Lawrence, with, uh, with Tom, uh, and it's a, and, and once again, I've, I've got seventy-five percent of the activity that goes through that, that dispatch center. And I would, I, I think it's important to have somebody out there, security purposes, but also that can help facilitate any issues that we have that come up and it's immediate, um, whenever we have things going on.
I, I. Go ahead. I agree, Sheriff, just from my, my point of view, in my perspective, because I've been looking for people and we've chased them and, and when I call dispatch, they're great. They just don't get it, what, what I'm doing, you, you know, like that, they'll ask you questions that don't really, but, I mean, there's the questions they have to ask, but, and it's not their fault at all, but having a law enforcement presence there when you have something like that, they kind of know what's going to happen before it's going to happen and they're preparing for that and making sure the dispatch, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a, it's a strange situation when you call and, and you've heard it on the news and TikTok and all these other things where, why is that dispatcher asking those questions? Well, they have to ask those questions. But then again, when you have a law enforcement presence with the dispatch there, you're going to have somebody that goes, okay, we can skip off, you know what I mean? There's other things they can.
And the other thing too is, is that if he sees something going on, if he had, if he's in there and, and, uh, we're, we're running short, he'd be qualified to be able to dispatch if he needed to. So it's just an extra set of eyes and hands out there that I think would, would be very beneficial. And from our side, having the representation out there, uh, is important, is very important.
Ms. Chair, if I could address this particular provision too, because I did draft it. We had a meeting on June twenty-seventh, um, where we talked a lot of these nuts and bolts and status and where we were on things. And the issue of this individual came up. Um, and while it was being discussed in roundtable format, Chief Butler volunteered, he said, you know, that, that is a critical thing to me and my agency. And I, Chief Butler may remember, I actually looked across the room and said, are you telling me that if that wasn't part of the agreement, your agency would not feel comfortable signing it? And he said that that was true. He said, if something like that isn't in there, I will not feel comfortable. So the word material is a legal term of art and that's what it means. If this wasn't in there, the parties wouldn't sign. So I, I'll take responsibility, blame, whatever you want to say for the use of that language, but I discussed that with, with Attorney Cannon. And, and it was based on that interaction. Again, that's why we have those meetings. Um, I also want to let the board know it was at that meeting that we all collectively decided, well, gosh, if we need ninety days, we start looking at our watches, right? I mean, so that was when, although we've been working as the sheriff indicated for nine months, that was where the, the, the time sensitivity came in because we were told by the vendor that they would need ninety days to coordinate the CADs. So I don't want there to be, I don't want it to seem like anybody's talking out of both sides of their mouth. Everybody has been working for months, but this time sensitivity issue came up around June twenty-seventh. So this is all happening relatively rapid fire. Uh, there was a FACA conference, I think you guys know what caused my delays. So everybody's active with diligence here, everybody's trying to make sure all the agencies are happy. But that particular provision is a product of that meeting on the twenty-seventh and my, my discussions with Mr. Cannon. And that's why it's in there. We'll make that clear.
And I will add, it was, I was at the meeting, I listened to everything that was said, and it was a general consensus between chief, the sheriff and Tom, our director for dispatch, that this was a beneficial, this disposition was beneficial to our dispatch.
And again, I don't think nobody in this room disagrees that it'd be beneficial to the point. Uh, chief, are you going to, are you going to fund part of this out of your budget?
Obviously I can't discuss budgeting without the city manager here, but if that comes to a recommendation.
You don't have control of five thousand dollars in your budget?
I have control for what the city managers allocated the funds. This is for a different item than it was, I have to do a fund transfer, so I would have to speak with the city manager.
I support it, but this is the held hostage, that's all what it is.
Well, currently I have.
That Joel out of your mouth, that's what you said.
Currently I have a dispatch supervisor that oversees the CAD and I have a lieutenant that oversees that supervisor and keeps track of all of our CAD and our misinformation. And moving over there with the oversight agency, the sheriff's office is now going to take on the responsibility in addition to what he has, also all the police department's C G S information. So in order to give oversight, I have to be confident that the sheriff has the ability to do the oversight.
So if we sign this today and the board, and this board doesn't find that, I mean, doesn't, uh, fund a position at a latter date, are you backing out of the agreement?
I'd have to sit down, I wasn't prepared to answer that question, I'd have to sit down.
All right, you can have a seat. You answered everything I didn't even know.
Everything you have.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you've got seventy-five percent of the responsibility there, am I, that's what you're saying, right?
Activity.
The activity that goes on there, so you're responsible for all that. So I get it. If I'm going to be responsible for what is going on there, I'm not saying that Tom can't take care of everything there, but at least you've got somebody there that can back him up. So I agree with what's going on there, we need, we need to help you out.
But sure, I'd like to hear from Tom.
Go ahead.
Tom, on what his thoughts is.
The sheriff is absolutely right, the sheriff is responsible for F and NCIC. Um, he is responsible for security of F and NCIC and C G S information. Currently, the sheriff has a FAC, which is the agency representative that handles F and NCIC, it's his employee that's out there. Uh, I have absolutely no objection to the sheriff having a liaison out there. Um, and I think it would be highly beneficial, as he said, if they have a law enforcement situation, to have a law enforcement officer that could step into dispatch and advise the dispatchers, you know, hey, a, ask for this, or, you know, they may be looking for this. Because dispatchers are civilians, they're not police officers, they're not trained police officers. They don't know what police officers always need. Now, the more seniority they get, the more familiar they get with it. But, uh, having that, having that availability, uh, would be nothing but beneficial. Uh, now, I'm not going to get into whether or not y'all funded or not, that's entirely up to y'all, that's political decision, not my decision. Uh, but I, I think having a liaison for dispatch that could help Lawrence with radios, that could help, help me with policies, procedures, like Don Meyer does now, uh, but Don Meyer's also over sheriff's office investigations. And helping me takes away from his duties and investigations. So if he's there, if, if Don or somebody else, it doesn't, you know, doesn't matter who it is, but somebody there that can help me, hey, we, we need to look at, because we really need to review policies periodically, we need to review them, and there's a lot of them, um, and SOPs, so it, it's nothing but beneficial to me. Uh, I think it's a good idea.
Don Meyer is also a certified dispatcher, am I correct on that?
I don't believe he is, no.
You don't, you don't believe he is?
No, he can, under, under Florida statutes, a certified law enforcement officer, and a certified law enforcement officer could temporarily, uh, step in and assist with dispatch. However, I'm sure that, you know, he can go through the class if he wanted to, you know.
He's been dispatched twenty.
I don't know that he need, I don't know that he actually needs to get on the radio. I think his role or whoever liaison's role would be more kind of in the background advising the dispatchers of what they may want to do. I mean, I, you know, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, but I, I think that's kind of what the role is envisioned to be. You know, be in dispatch and say, hey, you know, maybe, you know, let's go ahead and get a helicopter started for this man, let's go ahead and get a helicopter, let's go ahead and do this before they're told. Because dispatchers are pretty reactive to what officers in the field tell them. If somebody's been there who has been on these scenes and knows it, you know, they'll say, okay, that, we're going to need to, you know, get a helicopter from Latchwell County, we're going to be getting dogs coming from prison, let's go ahead and do that, you know, tracking dogs, that kind of thing. You just, it, it, it would make it more efficient, in my opinion.
Right, I, I, I want to hear your thought, what you had to say about that.
That's it, I mean, that's, that's, I'm supportive of the sheriff's position, having a liaison out there.
And they're dispatching a serious situation, y'all. Two seconds can make the difference in catching a guy or not catching a guy or helping the people or doing, I, I, I've been there myself. It, and, and when you, it's kind of like if you got Kevin Kirby and he's on, he's there and somebody's dispatching a call about an emergency at a well in so-and-so, so-and-so, which officers are also inclined to know about certain people, certain areas, certain thing. If, if Kirby get, is standing there and the dispatcher that's trying to fix the well says, well, we'll send, and Kirby goes, wait a minute, there's another well a hundred yards away, we got it sitting there, it's electric. He knows before anybody else knows, it, he doesn't have to get called later and react to this or react to that. And, and that's just in water and, and, and in, and in the work that, that, that county road department does. This, this stuff here is a lot more time sensitive in most cases. Now, there are some time sensitive stuff with Kirby's job too, but what I'm saying is having him there is, is a, in my opinion, if I'm getting, making a nine-one-one call, I want him there because I, there are just so many little things that they know that the dispatchers don't know. And like you said, dispatcher's doing their job based on what they're told, whereas you got a guy standing up there that may know the individual or knows family individual or knows where the individual's headed, you know, it's just a lot of things that he can do better than anybody else can do. And plus, we have both chief law enforcement officers of this county who know a whole lot more about enforcement law than we do. We got the, the guy that runs dispatch, does a great job out there saying, we need it. Well, we need it. Uh, we can, we can kick this around much if we want to for another ten years, but we need it. We need what they're saying because I've been where these people are on these chases and these things and, and it's just the more talent and the more experience you have in one of these calls is what saves lives. And, and there's, there's, there's all kind of instances online, online where you see where somebody knew something that everybody else didn't know and they happened to be a law enforcement, they were there and they went, look, the guy's mom lives right over here. And that's a big deal, so it's just, it's just a case-by-case basis. But the liaison that's, uh, going to be there that we're all talking about, uh, Don definitely, as we all said before, more than capable, but with budget coming up, we might ought to sit down there and take consideration that, you know, all nine-one-one tragedies don't happen while Don Myers at work. We've got another sixteen hours.
So maybe we had to hire another one.
With an issue.
Maybe we had to hire another.
And I know we, I know the guys can be called in and ladies or whoever it may be, but it's, it's something to, uh, what you're saying makes sense, but, you know, we, we need to, uh, and I'm not saying that holds up disagreement, it's just something I think needs to take place and be considered.
Well, how about this? We got to start somewhere and why, why not, you know, why not give this a try? And then if we see downrange and then, and the money's there to be able to do that, which I, I think that money, you know, is, is a big issue, but, but look, safety again. And if we see that we need to have somebody on, have a, a coverage of twenty-four hours, then we can look at that, uh, downrange. But I would like to get this started, you know, when we talk about real-time incidents, you're, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Murphy. I mean, he won't be there twenty-four hours. I mean, there's some times though that he does get called out and, you know, these guys work a lot. I mean, they, they'll go home, they'll be headed home at five o'clock and just about get to the house and we'll have a call out, just like the other day, you know, but they, they come out and, you know, that's, that costs money to do that. But you know what? I'm willing to spend the money when we have something going on in our county and, and I've run, I run it tight as I can, but having that person in there is, to me, is, is real-time, you've got somebody there that kind of gets in what we call op tempo. And so when we got operations going out there and like they said earlier, he understands our op tempo, whereas a dispatcher comes in working and they do a great job. I'm not, I'm not bashing them, saying they're, they're not doing a good job, they do a fantastic job out there. And, but having that additional asset out there, people that call in there sometimes, he may even be able to give them, you know, what they need where we don't have to call a road deputy. Uh, he would be certified to be able to take some of those, field some of those phone calls that go in out there. So, you know, there's a lot of benefit that goes with it, plus the security aspect of it.
Uh, based on the conversation we have had this morning and waiting ten years, uh, sheriff comments, chief comments and Tom comments, uh, I'm, I'm ready to move on.
Making a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like, sign? Motion carries.
May I have a clarification? Is that for the MOU or is that for the MOU and, and going after the, the additional position?
That's the whole thing on this.
The whole nine yards.
Yeah.
I, I don't understand the question.
Did you second vote on yards or did you second approve?
No, I seconded the MOU.
I, I, yeah, to be clear, I, and appreciate that, Sheriff, I think the motion that was seconded was to approve the agreement.
That's exactly what it said.
Just for the clerk's information.
At a total cap. I, I, I'll make another motion after we pass this.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'll entertain, I'll do another motion after we pass this, this one.
Okay.
So Madam Clerk, is that clarified for you? And was the vote taken?
Yes, your motion.
Okay.
So you? So is the MOU on the agenda today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, I got you, I got you.
So the MOU's approved.
I have a number one under discussion.
Just, just one second, what, was there, was the vote taken?
Yes, the vote was taken.
Okay, okay. Five oh, to approve.
That's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
And, and one second, Commissioner, because I have a question for clarification. Y'all had discussed moving that one hundred and twenty days out to three sixty.
Three sixty.
Do you want to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to move the back out, uh, termination clause to three hundred and sixty.
Before. Can I, can I make, make, make us, uh, comment on that? When y'all talk about the, uh, the, uh, the get out clause or whatever, uh, that is standard, standard practice. There are some things in here that would require this to be broken if there are security violations. And so the, the hundred and eighty days is kind of a standardized thing with FDLE and whatnot. Uh, I would, you guys will not go into a contract that y'all would not have a get out clause, like it or not. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not being, I'm being argumentative, I'm just saying that there, there, there has to be that in there for if there's violations or other things like that. I, I agree the hundred and eighty days, uh, you know, we, they talked about ninety days to start with and we're all like, no, that's not going to work. Because everybody needs react time.
It's a hundred and twenty days.
Hundred and twenty, yes, that's correct. That's why we put it, we, when we were in those discussions, we said, we, we need, you know, a hundred and twenty days. I'm okay with doing an annual, making this thing where it's, uh, where, uh, if y'all wanted to, to do it like, um, on the term of the, uh, of the sheriff, you know, that it would be re, uh, once we go into the, to the agreement, make it a, a, a four-year agreement to, runs with the term of the sheriff, so the new sheriff coming in, if they want to stay in the agreement, then they can, they can do, do whatever, you see what I'm saying? And, but there still needs to be the, the, the get out clause and, um, you know, a hundred and, what, what'd we say, a hundred and twenty days? Or you want to make it a hundred and eighty days?
But the clause of, 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 of getting out should be based on things in the memorandum of understanding.
That's correct. You have to have some kind of cause to be able to generate a get out. In other words, if somebody is not holding up their end of the, 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 uh, the agreement and you have to notice the other person or the other parties or the other parties of your, your, uh, your, your concern. And I think if those get addressed, then you, you move on, but if not, then, then there's a process, there's a process of that.
If there's a violation, that would have to be resolved immediately.
That's correct. If there's a security violation, then that.
That's what I'm saying, I, I don't know that security violation, I think that would supersede anything, it would have to be corrected, but.
But that, that, that one there.
I don't know if that would terminate this MOU for, for a security violation.
It depends, I mean, you know, if you have, if you have multiple security violations, I mean, you know, if you have multiple security violations, you know, then yes, somebody's going to have to get out of there because I'm just saying, before we get wrapped around all this get out, and I know y'all have had some backwards and forth, I'm here to stay. I mean, this is going, I'm so excited about this finally coming to fruition after all these years that I don't want anything to do a hiccup, but we do need to keep things in, you know, in the lane and understand that there has to be a get out clause on this. And if y'all want to make it a year, I'm fine with that.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Chairman, here's what I don't want to happen. And not only with this memorandum of understanding, but from now on, all of them, if we invest all this money, if somebody just gets pissed off and say, "I'm out, I want out." That's a no-no.
But they can't under this one. They can't under this one. You got to have cause to get out of this.
So, well, the termination language at issue is, as the sheriff indicated, the agencies have to be able to extricate themselves without cause if they want to, right? So that, and that's why a really long window on that. The sheriff is absolutely right. If there's a breach or violation resulting in exposure for either of the agencies under an FDLE audit or anything else that's caused by another party, that's different. That's going to be breach of contract and that could end this thing very quickly.
That's what I'm saying, that's a whole different thing.
It's a different type of ending of the agreement, so to speak. So, you know, again, the motion on the floor is to go from 120 to 360. I did not hear a second on that yet.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries. I just want to make one other, make sure, clear one other thing. What we approved was this MOU in the first. Just that. I just want to make sure Clerk Court understands we approved this MOU on the first vote. Okay. We'll make sure there wasn't a question about that.
That, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead, David.
I think a lot of the concerns about breaking up and people going different ways are going to be addressed in the interlocal agreement. That will be the final interlocal agreement that actually creates the consolidated dis stand. This does not create consolidated dis stand. This just sets up the law enforcement FDLE regulations over combining CAD softwares and how to handle FNCIC and how to handle all the secure data that law enforcement has to have. This does not consolidate this.
This paves the way.
Chairman.
This doesn't consolidate.
We, so what we've done so far did not approve the extra man.
It did not, no, sir.
Well, I moved that we take the recommendation of Tom and the sheriff on the oversight person.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Clerk, did you understand the, you understood the motion, right? Okay.
Can I ask this? With us going through everything and consolidating the CADs, how soon would we be able to, y'all approved the position, when would we be able to get the funding to be able to go ahead and start that transition? Because I've got to advertise and do that.
I think what's the final interlocal is agreed on, we do it at that time.
Okay.
Or would that start next year's budget?
Can we go ahead and?
That would probably be a budget. That'd probably, because we really won't be combined till next year.
So your choices are you can do it once upon, once consolidation occurs. If you want to do it sooner than that, you can either put it in next year's budget, so it would occur October 1, or you would have to do a budget amendment, amend his budget and you'd have to find the money for it, do it this, this week.
Let us get back to you.
Okay. Because I'd like to get him started with all this going on as soon as possible.
We got to find the money, but I know we're dealing right now with all this, we're dealing with next year's budget.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Chair, before we move on, I'd just like to make a comment, simply that there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to try to get to these points. Yourself as chair in this committee, I did a lot of arguing back and forth and I get it all. The one thing I just wanted to emphasize to each person on this board, because I know I have one side of the city, the night we had the combined meeting, we need to keep this wheel rolling because every single minute of the day, we're putting citizens inside the city limits at risk with this rain down thing. I'll say that today and I'm going to say it right on because that's a big deal here.
I will tell you this, we've met every Tuesday, or how many months now, working on this?
Yep.
So the chief, the sheriff, me, David, the fire chiefs, I mean, we've put a lot of time and effort to get to where we're at. I'm proud of where we're at and I'm glad to see this finally coming to fruition. And I agree, that's why we're trying to speed this along so much. Every day we put lives in danger.
I commend each one of y'all for your efforts, I really do.
Appreciate it. Let's move on, Mr. Kirby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have five items for your consideration, inclusive of item number seven from the consent The first item is guardrail maintenance. So through the years, obviously, we have our guardrails damaged periodically. Because they're so small of a contract in nature, it's always hard to get somebody to come in, help us put them back as needed. So this has been a contract needed for many years. We went out to bid, we received two bids. This will allow us to repair our guardrails in a very timely fashion. So I'm requesting a motion to award bid number 2023 L Low Bidder Grading and Bush Hall Services in the amount of $43,382 and approve the service agreement.
So moved. Got a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second question.
Kevin, who does, did you have a question on? Go ahead.
Uh, Kirby, is a new contractor?
Yes, sir.
Because there's a big difference between.
I noticed that too. It's half price.
Between the bids, you satisfied with?
I will answer it like this, this is one of those unique bids. So do you need a 37 and a half foot standard index taper? Do you need one breakaway post? Do you need four? Guardrails are a very unique animal. It's got to be a certain height with a half inch tolerance. When people get wrecked, that's the first thing everybody starts investigating, was it installed properly? So when you have bids like this, the contractor is really at risk because he tries to capture the real low end items and put a high price on them. And the bigger the job, the lower the price. So it's going to be an experiment, by all means. This is the first time we've done this. So what I do know is when we tear up guardrails now, we go and put barrels and attenuated drums and things like that. Sometimes it goes four to six weeks before we can get an independent bid in to come and repair it because it's usually such a small job. This will end that problem, assuming the contractor can do it for the prices that are going.
Now, under the guardrail maintenance, that's everything?
No, sir.
Does the guardrail clean, somebody run into it, fix it back?
We do in-house maintenance. This is primarily designed for when a car bumps into guardrail, tears guardrail up, the ends hanging out there without, no protection. Mr. Foreman will probably elaborate on this better than I am. It puts us at a different level of liability when we just have drums up. Does that make sense?
So they'll be doing the same thing that I've done on I-10, on 75?
You are correct.
Car hit the guardrail, I go in and fix it?
Yes, sir.
Well, depending on how many wrecks, how many guardrails got to be fixed according to what I'm looking at.
This is a schedule of values contract. So if you've got an acreage assembly that needs repaired, it's one thing. It might be three things. So schedule of values, that's why it's difficult when contractors, these are hard bids to put together. It's not a baseline bid. It's whatever happens, you react to it.
But hurry incident, it's still going to be half price.
Yes, sir.
Okay, happy with that one.
Oh, okay, I got a, any more questions? Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a housekeeping item. So DOT submitted 202324 Traffic Signal Maintenance Compensation Agreement for Approval. Reimbursement of the county, $120,474. So Resolution 2023 R27 will confirm the agreement. So this is to take care of your red lights. This is reimbursement from the state. I'm requesting a motion to approve and adopt Resolution 2023 R27.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, Kirby, I want to go back to number one again. In the contract, they have so many days, so long to respond.
You are correct.
So that's in the contract?
Yes, sir. That is the purpose of the contract. Mr. Williams, the way it works today, Baskin Norris Road, we've reviewed 1,000 times, the new road at Walmart. I believe they've hit that guardrail about a half a dozen times thus far in the last eight or nine years. When it gets hit, we call everybody, give us a price, come fix guardrail. They figure that's just such a small job, they may get back with you, they may not get back with you. We have purchasing requirements to get three concrete bids, the way that works so forth and so on. This is the tool that gives you contractor. Guardrails hit on Baskin Norris, I forget the timeframe I put in there, you have X amount of days to come repair. They do so, they give you a bill, move on to the next one.
So the contractor knows that he got to have all this material on board before an accident happens.
That will be the challenge post-COVID. That is, that's going to be on.
But this contract surely has contracts with other municipalities, so is that correct? Is it a local contractor? Who is?
I'm not sure. Our purchasing department did all this.
That's what I'm saying, though, the materials, they probably stock materials, but they, I'm sure that they have contracts with other.
I did validate through our purchasing department that they're a valid contractor for lack of a better word.
You did what, Kevin? I'm sorry.
I did validate through our purchasing agent, she did all the legwork for this, that this is a reasonable contractor, if you may. I do not know that personally.
You good?
Ain't you glad you got out of the run?
But you know, the only thing I know, I've done that for DOT.
That's right, long time.
From Oakella to the Georgia line. And you have to have material on jobs and all of that. You can't wait till an accident happened to all the material to fix an accident.
I understand, I understand it. You got to have, you got to have.
Because you're in stock. Because the state was at liability and this county would be at liability if we get guardrail tore up and is not fixed in a reasonable time of doing so.
Okay, Mr. Kirby.
I might be up here again. Okay, let's see, are we lighting next? Okay, this next item on the agenda is the sister to your red lights. This is your lighting agreement. DOT has submitted 202324 reimbursement on our side, $165,600. I'm requesting a motion to approve AS079 Highway Lighting Order 202324.
Second. Motion.
Got a motion?
Yeah.
Got a second.
So a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item, as you all know, I'm obligated on a quarterly basis, update the board.
Before we get started on the project, do you want to address number seven?
I can't.
Let's address number seven on the consent agenda. Because that way we can, then we're moving to project update.
Okay, sure. Item number seven. Recently, this board approved the Columbia County Design Manual and the MSBU for all subdivisions being built moving forward. That was real, month ago, plus or minus. The intent of that was to ensure that our developers have a guideline similar to the spec book the DOT has. We now have our own spec book. This is what you'll do, this is the steps you'll take. Attached with that is your MSBU. The thought was, folks that desire to live in those subdivisions will have a separate taxing authority. Therefore, when it gets time to make the necessary repairs, to mow the grass, to fix the pipes, to repave 25 years later, those monies go into a reserve account, for lack of a better word, those monies are available to capture those efforts and it will not be on the burden of the other taxpayers. Purpose of this being put back on the agenda was in the spirit of the MSBU. Obviously, in my opinion, the intent was, once a developer enters an MSBU, it is permanent, all the way to the point of having enough money to repave it 25 years from now. There is a proposed development off of County Road 18 in Fort White. When that was brought to my attention, my thought process was, the town of Fort White does not have the means and methods to take care of a new subdivision if it goes through. So I approached the town and said, "The county is willing to help you folks with this." And I explained the process that I just explained. Ironically enough, this is all happening at the same time. We even have other subdivisions that were submitted prior to this board passing those requirements that say, "We want to get in this."
Yeah, me personally have a subdivision. He called me and said, "Hey, can I get in on that program?" And he's already approved. He doesn't have to do it. He said, "I wish I could get on that program, so."
And we have multiple other subdivisions in the county right now doing the approval process that are required to go under this MSBU and Columbia County Design Manual. This subject, proposed development, was annexed in to the town of Fort White. Therefore, at this time, when, if and when the subdivision is built, O and M will go to the town of Fort White. In my opinion, they don't have the means to do the O and M.
Do they have any equipment to track, any kind of, anything to dig, anything up or pave or?
No, sir.
Do anything?
They mow grass. Okay.
So they got lawnmowers?
Right.
They don't have a backhoe?
We just bought them a rubber tire backhoe, if y'all recall.
Oh, we bought, oh.
Right, so I haven't delivered it yet, I don't think. We want to grapple. But that being said, they took a position that, well, we would prefer, if y'all did it for a while and at some point we'll take it back over. It really confused me. At the end of the day, the reason I put this on the agenda, or David and I put this on the agenda, was to clarify the spirit of the MSBU. If you enter an MSBU with Columbia County, it's forever. So I, the bottom line is, when you're driving down 18, you see the green sign, says so-and-so road. Those taxpayers build those $400,000, $500,000 houses. The storms come in, this and that comes in, and they pick the phone up, call Columbia County Public Works. And I tell them, "I'm sorry, we cannot help you." We all know how that works, right? So this was an extension of an olive branch to say, "I think the county is willing to help you, just like we do it everywhere else, Lulu, Mason City, Columbia City."
This is nothing new. This is not a new thing. It's new, but it's the way it is from now on. So I don't understand.
From about a month ago, plus or minus, when you, this board approved that? Yes, sir.
From now on? And let me tell you something, if this was in my district and this was happening in my district in some way, shape or form, and I know, I don't know whose district it is, to tell you the truth, but you can't guarantee them people, when they're paying that MSBU, they expect service. And you can't expect that out of the town of Fort White. And I'm not saying anything bad about Fort White, but they don't have the tractors or the manpower or the money to fix anything in a subdivision. Because you never know, we're taking it over immediately, right? We're taking those subdivisions over immediately.
As of when you approved it.
So let's say something happened to one of them. Who's going to fix it? And when they call the county commissioner and he says, "Well, town of Fort White, they're going, they're not going to build them houses knowing that town of Fort White can't service that subdivision if something bad happens to the hot road or whatever."
In my opinion, I live it. They see the green sign, they logically assume county's taking care of it. So the motion that I'm requesting is to support, my opinion, that a MSBU is permanent. If you enter an MSBU, I do put that form of motion, sir. I mean, I'm sorry, I request for motion.
So moved. In other words.
We got one, one comment on this question. Clerk, go ahead. Maybe we can address your comments or questions while we're talking, discussing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now I'm totally confused. I've been covering the Fort White meetings. Suddenly the county shows up, something about green signs. Nobody really understands what's going on. I don't even understand what's going on. I know there was a big problem with Disney and the state. I mean, Disney had that whole district, they were responsible for the maintenance and for everything else that went on at Disney. I don't understand, the town of Fort White has really had no trouble with subdivisions. As far as this subdivision, the developer wanted it annexed into the town of Fort White and that got annexed in. That's the history of it. It's really pretty simple. I'm not sure why, they must have had their reasons. This does not alleviate the fact that town of Fort White pays a full complement of county taxes. So in an emergency, if they were to call the county, it would be hard, I'd be hard pressed to see that the county is going to hang up the phone and say, we're not coming down here. Just this stuff about green signs and red signs. And I would also respectfully point out to you, Mr. Chairman, because I looked, unless this suddenly appeared on the agenda, I don't even, there wasn't even any backup material on this one either. It was on, it was on there? It was, it was on the consent agenda, and now we find out from Mr. Kirby, it's this wish list that he has. I think, you know, in respect to the public, this thing needs to be written up. Not just flying by the seat of the pants like you always do. This is a big deal, what's going on in Fort White right now. And with water and sewer coming in there, and the possible of redeveloping that subdivision and doubling the capacity to, at least two hundred homes to one on a quarter of an acre and getting some money from the state for affordable housing, is a grand opportunity that's going on in Fort White now. Whatever Mr. Kirby's talking about, I heard him talking about it twice in Fort White, I don't know what he's doing. And with all respect, uh, the county attorney needs to look into this for restraint of trade. Because if, if, if a person builds a subdivision, the developer, anybody, and then it goes to operations and maintenance, and, and, and it's okay. And they have their engineering firm. The problem here is, in Fort White is, is the town of Fort White can hire an engineering firm to oversee what's going on as the subdivision gets developed. Clearly, if the county comes in and does it, the, the developer is, does not have to pay any of that. The county is doing that for him. And that has to be made perfectly clear. This is kind of like a little hokey stuff for, it's been going on in Columbia County forever, since I started looking at Columbia County. So I would respectfully ask, and I'm going to wrap this up, that something be put in writing, and that the board, before it passes any non-existent motions, that's not in, that hasn't been in the backup material, give this a little bit more thought and consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, so all this came about because, um, the town clerk, Connie, met with Kevin and I in a meeting, and we were discussing how they wanted to handle the maintenance of their roads. And Kevin said, if you want the county to help, this is what the county is now doing. This is what we would think. Connie said, yes, that's a great idea. So that's why Kevin went down to the town of Fort White, because of that meeting that we had with Connie, where she said, um, that was probably a good way for the town of Fort White to proceed. At the end of the day, how the town of Fort White handles O N M is up to the town of Fort White. What we're asking for is clarification, because there was confusion, that if they want the county to do it, we either do it or we don't do it. We don't do it like partway and stop in nine years or stop in eight years. From the county's perspective, policy-wise, we were asking for clarification. Does the board want us to say, if we take over the, your subdivision for maintenance, we're taking it over with the intent of it being for life, not just a temporary fix? And so, you know, there was some confusion on that, because their board, um, thought maybe they could do it for a few years, and then maybe after nine or ten years, they could start taking it over at that point. Um, you run into some accounting issues of, if we're collecting money to repave roads in the future, how does all that get handled if you start doing it? And so, we're just asking for clarification, if, when the board adopted the M S B U ordinance, that the intent was, when you adopted M S B U ordinance for a neighborhood, that it would be for the life of the neighborhood. Um, and that's, we just want to know the intent of the board. Um, again, ultimately, the town of Fort White decides what's in the town of Fort White's interest.
But then, or when we set this forth, didn't it say within Columbia County? As far as this, uh.
It's Columbia County.
Columbia County cannot charge an M S B U within another jurisdiction without an interlocal agreement with that jurisdiction authorizing us to do so.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Murphy, you're exactly right. The, the county's subdivision ordinances are for the unincorporated area. And so, when the suggestion was made that the county might perform maintenance within an incorporated area, this was brought to their attention. Well, this is how we do subdivisions now. So if you want to go this way, we got to go this way, and you would need to authorize us to do that. We've checked with Heather Ensigno, so she confirmed, we do in fact have to have authorization from that jurisdiction to go in and assess. The question was, when you dedicate those roads and drainage improvements on the subdivision plat, subject to maintenance, right? So we'd, we'd have a financial obligation to maintain. Is that something you do for three years, four years, or five years? It had always been envisioned when we were drafting everything up, and I think when we discussed with you, no, that's how the county would always maintain the subdivision. So there was never this idea that you would stop four or five years down the road and hand the keys to another jurisdiction. So that, and, and again, whether you vote on it today or not, I mean, I think that's an issue that does need to be clarified. I am of the opinion, that it's unnecessarily complicated. Uh, if you pull the trigger and the subdivision gets created and the dedications are made, leave them alone. Right? If it's dedicated to the county, for the county to maintain, leave it alone, right? The bottom line, jurisdictions don't make any money off this stuff. These don't generate revenue by definition.
That's why I don't understand.
They have to be spent in that subdivision. So it really, it's, it's kind of a distinction without a difference. Who is the O M E? You just have to name them, and then they should, you know, wear that hat in perpetuity.
And I think part of the contention was, county is going to be the O N M for subdivision. They should be the oversight of the building of the subdivision. They're going to maintain the road.
Well, that's what we require in ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. And that's, that's, that was part of the question, I think, that, uh, Stu brought up. Oversight of the, of the building of the roads and the subdivisions, the drainage and pods and all.
And, and if I can punctuate what commit, what, what Mr. Kraus said, absolutely one hundred percent, the town of Fort White will decide. The county will not impose. The county, the town will decide what they want to do. It is within their jurisdiction, and, and I believe staff have been very clear. I've been very clear with staff. We will respect, you know, their legislative authority.
And also, this, on the, on the approval for the, uh, permits in front of the water management, it has to be their permit, who's going to do the operation.
It does.
So that's why it's got to be decided.
Oh, it, it's just, it's, it's simple. We are going to be responsible for the roads through a memorandum of understanding to town of Fort White, and we do it the way we want to do it. If not, they do it themselves.
It, it's one way or the other. And, and I'm fine if Fort White wants to do it, let them do it. But I, I don't. I mean, it's kind of like me going and buying a million dollar home. I can't keep it up. And, and I don't think, I don't think Fort White can keep that promise of those folks. Because, and it's not any, their fault. They just don't have the money to do it. And, and I want to ask you something while we're talking about this. Are there other, uh, subdivisions in the city of Fort White or the town of Fort White that are maintained by the town of Fort White? Their roads graded, their, I mean, is that something they're getting into? Are they going to get into that aspect of maintenance of subdivisions now?
Mr. Chair? I'd like, before I answer your question, I'd like to touch on a couple of things. I'll go and answer your question. It's been nearly twenty years since a subdivision has been developed in the town of Fort White. So yes, sir. And as an individual keeps making fun of my green sign statement, my staff knows if it's a blue sign, you don't go in it. We developed an interlocal about a decade ago with the city of Lake City, because they've only got a handful of roads compared to our roads. We've got a list on all my admin staff that says, this is a city road, this is a county road. We know those. My guys pull up and see a green sign in the town of Fort White, we fix it. You are correct.
Inside the town of Fort White?
Yes. Now, probably, if you were to ask Mr. Foreman, I'm probably outside, outside my bounds. But we've, we've always done it. Well, we're growing, and everybody's growing. And now we know that we're requiring everybody enter an M S B U and follow our guideline, everybody. But in this case, the town is theirs. So they can do it how they want to do it. Only thing I was trying to do was help. If they opt not.
Maybe we need to take them green signs down.
We're good. We're good. Now, what the purpose of me bringing this to this board was when I explained, as Mr. Foreman indicated, Joel and I and a couple of other guys worked real hard to get us around on the M S B U and the guideline. And our, we know our thought process. When I advised the council, that in my opinion, we either take it all or none, I was told by an individual, I did not have the authority to say that. So I'm back in front of this board, asking, does the board support what I just said, that statement, that we take it forever?
Let, let, let me say something.
If we take it.
And this is not going to be toward Fort White. Rocky Ford, and, and I love him, has done more for Fort White, and this board, I believe, and, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, has done more and planned more good things for Fort White than any other board has. Would, would y'all, would y'all say that? Y'all been here eight or ten, twelve years, some of you, you been here a hundred. I don't know how, all of a sudden, we've become the bad guy in Fort White, because Rocky Ford's done more for. I always joke with Rocky, because my family is originally from Fort White. I say, I say, oh, we're going to go give support, do something for White, you know, just joking, joking and comparing it to my district, you know? And, and I just can't imagine how this is being, because if we're maintaining Fort White, I guess they want to be their own entity. It, it's tough to do. I hope they know what they're doing, but I just, I can't believe as much as we're doing in it. I mean, what's the potential expenditure in the next, remember fifteen, twenty years of, for sewer and all? What is it, Rocky? It's in the.
Million.
Millions, fifty, sixty million dollars, I believe. In improvements in Fort White, and they go, and, and they won't handle it? I, I, it, it's boggling my mind, of all the things we've done in Fort White, and they have, they probably have been not looked at real hard, you know, I, I don't know what all's happened down there, because I haven't been a commissioner, but we are doing a lot in Fort White. Everything we can do for them. And it's like, now we're, I, I don't understand it. It's hard for me to understand.
Well, I, I, I laid out scenario. It is this or that. That's simple. You know, you can, you can whip a dead horse to death.
I mean, it's either, it's either we do it or they do it. And if they want to do it, that's fine with me.
That's all right.
Fine with me.
But if we're going to do it, we're going to do it like we want to do it.
Well, we have to, because we give that promise. Like I said, they see that green county sign, they know that the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners is behind them one hundred percent when we need to fix a road or help their community. If it doesn't have that green sign, we, we can't guarantee that. If it's not going to be the county that takes care of it, we can't guarantee it.
Yep. Well, all I'll say is really not proposed to do anything down there that we don't do every day right now.
And if I may clarify that, sir, that's, you adopted, uh, index design. You, you adopted a manual. You, you, you have adopted all of this, so we had a clear path going future. And we're not by no means telling the town of Fort White what to do, but if we do it, this is how we do it. I just need a clarification from this board to support it.
Do they have a motion?
Yeah.
So may.
I think we're ready.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Uh, the motion is to, uh, direct the, or pass it on to the city of Fort White, that, uh, we will accept it as per our M S B U or, or subdivision guidelines. Is that correct?
May I help you, Commissioner?
Our M S B U is basically, is, is a continuing service as far as.
Go ahead, Kevin.
You want to, you want to tell us how?
I know what I want to say, and I just think everybody knows.
I think, I think we probably need a lawyer to do.
Motion should be. I think it's actually more, it's, it's more simple than it's being made. Um, it, it's either the, the county will be prepared to accept the, um, subdivision in perpetuity or not at all.
That's my motion.
Okay. Can I get a motion to that?
So moved.
Perpetuity.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
He had to use one of the words we couldn't, he had to use one of the words we couldn't pronounce.
Okay, thank y'all.
Let's go ahead with the, uh, oh, capital project. Yep, uh, the, uh, capital project.
Okay, thank you, sir. We will start out at the Intermodal Park Sewer Plant Expansion. That's going extremely well. So it's a costly effort, but it's going real good for us. Ellisville Sewer Expansion, this is where we went from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. We're in what we call the punch list phase of that job. That job's coming in within budget. We're, we're basically completing it, what we call the punch list. Water Treatment Plant at the Intermodal Park on Ninety East. Legislative appropriations were approved. So that's good. We now have our funding to take care of our water plant. And for clarification purposes, you'll have your railroad, right? Constructed it, you're building your sewer plant, now you have the funds to build your water plant. The next big step is to find the funds to run all the interlocal pipes. So you'll have water, sewer, and rail. Now you've got to get it from point A to point B. That's your next big challenge. Ellisville to Fort White Waterline. This project is out to bid. Based on multiple meetings that the county manager and I've had over the last week or so, as it relates to interlocals and things of that nature, I'm of the opinion, though it's out to bid, we'll receive our bids. We met with some attorneys yesterday. Before we award that, I do think we need a lot of language cleaned up in various interlocals, inclusive of like the city. You may or may not be aware that there was a comment made as related to give us temporary water, you know, until we construct our water plant. I just wanted to throw that out there. I think that though it's out to bid, we'll receive our bids, we will be working to make sure we clean those interlocals up. Two forty-seven Cannon Creek, that is submitted water management for permitting. Cypress Lake Charles Dirt to Paper Conversion, that's under construction. Harnell Hills, this is at Moore and Lake Jeffrey Road, we're ninety percent done with your plans. We will be under construction this calendar year on the ground. High Dry Acres out in Columbia City, we're at sixty percent construction plans. We also intend to be on the ground working this calendar year at High Dry Dirt to Paper Conversion. Queen Shambria Windfield, we're designing, that's going well. And as we know, that's a little wet in places up there. We have to go through B E P. That is a process. But on our side of things, we're doing, we're, we're on schedule. But we do have to kind of wait that a little bit. Burley Road is out to bid. It will open July eighteenth this month. Uh, County Road Six, design's going well, but once again, we do have some wetland issues when we deal with D E P. We, uh, tend to get a little stop sign. So that is your grant-funded projects. You've got about sixty-seven million dollars allocated. We went through about thirteen and a half so far with a fifty-three, six ballots. And I'm of the opinion, by the end of this calendar year, that number will look a lot different. We've got a lot, a lot of work we're starting right now. Okay? So that concludes your grant-funded capital projects. On your county-funded side, Franklin Street Tower, your generator is on order with a delivery date this month. Richardson Outdoor Lights, this board approved, last meeting to proceed with that. So we are. River Rise Boat Ramp, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three R twenty has been submitted to Wildlife Commission. Field Laser Grading will be complete this summer. T D C Billboard is preparing it to go to bid this week. Petroleum Cleanup at Public Works is ongoing, but it's moving forward. Jail Admin Design is on hold for right now. The Traffic Ops Building, we're getting all laid out. We did receive a quote for our slab. We're waiting to get the board to move on. Animal Control. This board has given us a deadline of October one to be in that business. We have done our clearing. Our movers are scheduled to move the building the first of August. We are doing some survey geotechnical things and that nature. If you recall, once we got in there, we realized that they did not have the proper permitting, so we're having to do all that for them. Parking Lot at South Side is under construction. Mayo Road, we have completed the design. Our acquisition agents are working to obtain all that property. Probably the intent of Mayo Road, once we recognize the folks were not willing to donate the property, we're now in the acquisition phase. Mr. Ford and I discussed it. We probably will take and buy all that property, therefore it will be eligible for dirt to pay conversion on the state side of things. So your design will be done, your property will be acquired. That will make that a valuable, uh, project for the state potentially to help us with. Double Run Road is under construction. English L M Area. If you recall, a month or so ago, I told y'all that we had to get another couple of acquisition agents. Our other one left us. This project got caught up in the transition of that. Mr. Phillips, I indicated to you the other day, we had thirteen left. They were down to six or seven as we speak this morning. So that's moving along real rapidly. I hope to have a more favorable report by the next time I mention this to you. Two, sir.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Two forty-seven Bascom Norris, this is the project that you're contributing five hundred thousand a year to, we're in partnership with F D O T. Construction is set for twenty twenty-seven. Southeast Academic, this is a failure outgoing to the college. Survey's complete, the plan's complete. We are doing the permitting process through water management. Melon, Royal, and Emerald Lakes are all under construction. Gabriel, Thomas, and Hefflin are out to bid. So we've got about four point one in the hopper. We spent about eight twenty with a three million dollar balance. But once again, as you hear, projects out to bid, plans complete. This number will change very rapidly. Now, what is new on the table through their appropriations project descriptions? Got a crab lab, evidence room, make it spade. Nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. We discussed earlier about your water treatment plant out of the Intermodal Park, five point seven million dollars. Bascom Norris Funding. I just talked about two forty-seven and Bascom Norris with a partnership with the state. This one point two million allows you to go from Faith Road to State Road forty-seven. This one point two million allows you to go from Faith Road to State Road Forty-seven with the resurfacing project. This is that bad area between the ponds and the ball fields. We are currently in the process of trying to form a private-public partnership with some developers that are trying to build right across the ball fields. What does that mean? They will work their improvements in so we don't scab the road if you'd make. It'll be one continuous project, and I'll be back at a later date with that for you. Bethlehem.
Is that on Bascom Norris?
Yes, sir. Bethlehem Community Center, four hundred seventy-five thousand. So there's your Bethlehem Center money. And your fire department over at Lake Jeffrey Road for one point nine billion dollars. And that's it, sir. Are there any questions about your capital projects?
Just if we can proceed with that Bethlehem, get the plan finished up, so we may get a new voting precinct in the lower end of the county.
Yes, sir. Chairman, you through?
Anybody got any more questions for Kevin? Kevin, thank you for that.
Okay, thank y'all.
David? David, before you get started, can we take about three minutes for a bathroom break?
I'm about to freeze. Five minutes, huh?
It's a little cold in here.
Any of these other projects. Second one is the old Richardson High School building. The Department of State awarded Columbia County an African American Historical and Cultural Grant. Basically, five hundred thousand dollars to repair the old classrooms that are back behind Richardson. This was a grant written by Shannon Williams. The contract is not in there because we're having it redone. As you know, when it was originally awarded, ownership of the Richardson Center was in question. And they were working on, do we award it to the community center board? Do we award it to the city? Do we award it to the county? Now that the ownership of the Richardson Center is resolved, they're saying they're going to, they're basically awarding it, you can see in the background materials, to us. So I'm asking you to, does not require a grant match. I'm asking you to approve BA twenty-three sixty-four in the amount of five hundred thousand and authorize the chair to execute the agreement when they send it back with the new dates.
The move. Any more discussion? Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next one is the Bethlehem Community Center that we talked about earlier. Again, the legislature gave us the money, effective January or July one, we can expend it. They're going to be sending us the contract. We're asking you to approve the BA to set to appropriate the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. You've already approved the preliminary designs and plans, so we can proceed with going ahead.
Just need to get them finished up. I'm making a motion. We'll proceed.
Got a motion and say, I'd just like to say, David, I think it is very important that we proceed on this as quick as possible because we do need a voting precinct in that south end of the county. So let's, I'd love to have something down there that they could use for a voting precinct. At our next election.
The second person today that told me that.
And thank, thank the state for allocating this money that they, they gave up from the legislature.
And those people have deserved that place for a long time.
Yep, we got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next item is something we do every year. It's the E M P A grant. Dollar amount is pretty much online. We received it from the state. We need you to approve one hundred and five eight oh six and sign the agreement. That is for Shane Morgan's.
The move.
Department.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
The next item is every so often the state says, ah, we got a brilliant idea on how we can improve the process to handle disaster recovery and reimbursements for disaster recovery. And so they now have rolled out this new F R O C program that they say will speed up the process of our getting our money back and reduce the probability of us having to repay money later in the project. We don't have to do it. It's not required of us, but if we opt in, we can use this as a way to speed up our reimbursements and try and reduce the amount of money we end up having to pay back.
Your recommendation is?
My recommendation is to opt in.
Move. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, like sign?
Hopefully this process works better than the last one. Finally, private investor owned utilities, not finally, but investor owned utilities. Consolidated Water Works has been operating a water system in the Shadow Oaks subdivision. Basically, they've been charging increased rates. They have been overbilling allegedly some of their patrons. They have not been in compliance with the county ordinance. And when they're, our county ordinances require them before they can increase rates to come to your, to this board, get authorization. They just have not filed annual reports, regulatory assessment fees. They haven't done anything that our ordinance requires them to do.
You know, this is in my district and I had a lady call me that said that her rate went up to two hundred dollars a month. And it has been two hundred dollars a month for a long while now. And they told her, well, you must have a leak. So I went out there personally and looked at her and I've, I've messed with water systems a long time. In fact, for some of the people that own this, I actually helped a guy, y'all know out, he sold it now, but with water systems, I've dug up enough of those things that kill a mule, but there is no way that there was any leaks in that woman's yard. There's no way that, and I'm not, I'm, I'm speaking from what I'm seeing with my eyes. And I believe that Kevin sent somebody out there to look too. The, you can't even see the, the, the boxes that you check the meters with unless you got, and these are old meters. So there's no way that her water went up to two hundred dollars a month without a leak. But it's a consistent two hundred and, and, and I guess she's, the whole, there was another guy in here that, that, that had a problem with this system too. But I went out there and you can't even see some of the water meters. In the box, you can't see them.
So obviously they hadn't read the meter yet.
They ain't read a meter. If they read a meter, they got some kind of vision that you and I don't have because I walked up to them. I've got pictures of them on my phone, but I don't know how they're assessing what people are using. But two hundred dollars a month is ridiculous for water. And they haven't really followed any of the rules of anything, so I'm assuming they're not following them. I'm not saying this is a, but I'm looking at meters that I know haven't been read and haven't been dug up and haven't had leaks fixed. And, and they sent back something to Mr. Kirby or somebody about, they fixed two, those were due to leaks and we fixed it. It, even though it was five foot on their side of the fence, well, or five foot on their side. But the problem is, the way this place works, y'all know a lot about utilities. This, this strip goes between houses, backyards. There's a house here, house there, there's a strip about ten foot wide. All the boxes are in that strip and the power poles are in that strip. Pretty cool the way they set it up. You gotta dig under a fence to fix their water. There wasn't any dirt moved, there was nothing dug now unless they just know how to plant grass where I can't tell them. It, they, they don't only have a problem with not following county rules, they're doing something out there to those people that I believe may or may not be wrong, but I just don't understand a two hundred dollar water bill for a lady that it used to be forty-five or fifty dollars. And every time they tell them, a leak, a leak, a leak, well, they don't have a leak. It's, you know, it was dry earlier in this week. I went out there, it's not water anywhere. Doesn't like any water's ever been anywhere. And most of these, one lady's paying five hundred a month and, and I don't know how that's happening. I think she's telling me the truth, but hers, you can't even see her water meter. It has a box around it and you can't see the box. All you can see is dirt and just a little indention about that big around where the box corner may be. I mean, it just, something doesn't make sense about it. We need to get with them and do whatever we have to do because you know and I know, you don't, you don't mess people up on our water and electricity.
What's your recommendation, David?
So there's two issues. One is how do we enforce our existing ordinance to address this? And the other is, do we even want to remain in the regulation business or do we want to give this back to the Public Service Commission?
Need to be in the regulation.
I don't, I don't think we have the people to do it.
Well, here's the thing I don't want to do. We got a constituents being overcharged or doing, I don't want to just say, we don't want to deal with it here, we'll turn it over to them. I, I think we owe it to our constituents to help them if we can help them and deal with this.
I don't know how y'all. There's got to be an avenue to go straight to the P S C. You call P S C about them electrical lines in there and mention our great partner F P L, they come and run it. That, that, that's, that's a word they don't want to use. But, but my point is, we don't need to email them. We need to put a human being on the phone and get a human being to talk on the other side. Because we get so called up in sending out these little recommendations, nobody ever follows up on them. And this poor lady's still forking out two hundred something dollars a month that she probably can't afford.
She can't, she, 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 she just pays what she can. She's seven hundred or something behind. She told me and she said, I can't afford that.
You can't convince me.
There's a lot of things we do that we can put off or maybe try to do it another time when we got a better way of doing it or, or fix it all at once. But this right here is serious. When you, when you deprive people of the basic need, which is electricity and water, and if, if they're deprived of it or they're paying too much for it, I'm just saying, they may be completely right, the water people. But we know they're not going by any of our rules, so going by the people's rules isn't in there.
Because what Robbie's saying, if, if these meter boxes are covered up, I can almost assure you, there's not proper testing being done neither. You know what we go through, David, out there to Zay Park? And that's just one of many issues, you know? Of course, we got a guy that steps up and tries to, we're hoping to help, you know, but I think the P S C is the main thing, but we just got to put somebody on it to, you know, to, to keep the ball moving, you know? Because we, I'm like Ron, we can't be in the regulatory water business at that point, you know?
And they've been, they have admitted that they've increased strict, I'm sorry.
The, we need to fix what they don't apply by our ordinance. Fix what's there, then fix what's there, and then we turn it over and then
Right. Let the agency be in control of. So what is our, what is our mechanism to enforce our ordinances?
So at this point, I would direct the county attorney and myself to sit down, figure out the best way to enforce our ordinances and also transfer over to the P S C.
So one, we're going to need to give formal notice to this utility that their rates are not in compliance. As a rate, as the regulatory agency for rates, we would bring what's called an enforcement action and demand an accounting. So we would, you know, compel them to set their rates according to what's been approved. And we want an accounting for every dollar they charged over and above that rate since they started going above their approved rates. That's a, a, a circuit court action. We'll just need to do that. I don't think we can avoid doing that at this point because we are the regulatory authority. And now this has been brought to our attention. The other thing is transitioning, you know, you can't just snap your fingers and give it back to P S C. We're going to have to start communicating with them and saying, hey, we're going to adopt or we're going to amend our ordinances in all likelihood. We're going to, what do we need to do? What do we need to give you? What do we need to do to be prepared? You guys know there's a provision for a utility committee in our code for bringing rate cases and things like that. There's things that have been done. We have records since two thousand and seven when folks have tried to do it. So a lot of that's going to have to be handed over. Just to let you guys know, I think you already know this, the water quality issues have all, have never been under your, this is only rate that you guys have been concerned about. Everything else has been properly regulated by the state. We're just going to take this particular aspect, you know, some, somebody's charging me too much. Well, that's what P S C is built for, right? They're built to deal with that issue. We, we're not. So we will deal with this one because it did happen on our watch and we need to fix it. But I think we just work on a transition plan with P S C. And, and if you guys direct that, that's what I'll do and that's what David will do.
I think that's the plan.
Yep.
If you could make a motion to that effect, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that we do exactly what what we were just saying.
Second what he just said.
Can I get a second?
Say.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, like sign? Thank you, Davis and Joel, for that.
So the next one's another one that came up from a commissioner. They've noticed at times septic tanks are issued to lots that do not meet zoning requirements. And so we wanted to talk about, is there a better way to coordinate the issuance of septic tanks by the Department of Health with the permitting process? And in the meantime, we also discovered that the Department of Health in the next two years will no longer be doing septic tanks and that will be transitioned over to the Department of Environmental Protection.
David, as you, as you know, I deal with this quite a bit, different counties. The way other counties make sure this don't happen is the first thing you do is go to the zoning, planning and zoning. And they give you a zoning letter stating that what you're wanting to get permitted to do on that property is allowable for that property. Now, they allow us to go ahead and turn our paperwork in to the health department. But they won't issue us a permit until we have that zoning letter in our hand to give them a copy of that to the health department. And I, I think that's as simple, that's as simple as what we need to do is just require a zoning letter from our planning and zoning department before they issue that septic tank.
That, that's good.
Yeah, and Chair, if I may, of course, I reached out to you and said, hey, how'd they do it in another county? Because a friend of mine is one that brought this to our attention. And, and you know, everybody, like Miss Sally Ford said, no, ain't Rocky's wife or nothing like that. But the, but, but Sally said, you know, she's following the guy and I, I got a copy of the application. It was just an oversight by a contractor. He didn't mean nothing by it. It's, but it's, but unfortunately, you know, and it happened of all places up in Ron's district where you got twenty acres per, per one dwelling, you know, weird. But they're just real good friends of mine and I told them, so first one I called was how Rocky, how'd they do it in another county? So Sally said she would be more, she can't do it on her own, but if we bring that forward, she, they're happy to do it. So it's, it's a.
Madison County, Swan County, about every other county we deal with, that's how they handle that.
And my son, I was telling you, he, he just, he showed me his letter. Yeah, yeah, so, so that needs to happen sooner than later. Yeah, on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We're going to make a motion to that effect?
You can.
Yep.
Oh, I, do, do we need to draw something up to vote on? I mean.
I'll review what we already have in code with, with David. And if we need to make an amendment, we will, but if you want to direct, direct us in that direction, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we require a letter from planning and zoning stating the property is, can be used for the intended purpose of the permit before septic tank issue is, and building permit is issued on the property.
Say it.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, like sign? Hopefully that'll solve that problem.
Okay, the next item is in addition to the agenda. Additional state appropriated law enforcement salary funding sheriff's office. So the state appropriated an additional eighty, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars for salaries and personal services to law enforcement and specifically to our sheriff's department. Our sheriff is asking to do a budget amendment in the current fiscal year or the first quarter because the state budget runs from July one. And so this would give him funding for July one through December. So he's asking for one quarter of the allotment, eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty cents to go ahead and be transferred into his department.
This was done in this year's legislation?
This was done in this year's, last year it was a million something, I don't remember the exact amount. This year they increased it by three hundred and thirty-one thousand. We, the sheriff's still here if you have any questions.
When does this money come available to Columbia County in July?
Technically, all these things are available July one. Of course, the state takes a few days, months, weeks to get all their paperwork in order. But any expenditures from July one on are reimbursable.
Do you have the money to do this budget amendment?
We do.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, we're going to be refunded the money, so. Or.
I make, I'm making a motion, we do it, as long as we're getting the money back.
Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
So the next item on the, one of the things we added was a call for the adoption hearing for a revision to the fair housing ordinance that is in compliance with the C D B G. I'm requesting the board adopt a motion to set the hearing for our next regularly scheduled board meeting.
The move.
Aye.
Motion in a second. David, could you give us a little more explanation on what this hearing is about?
Uh, you have to have a fair housing ordinance, which means you're going to comply with the federal regulations that you will not discriminate in housing. In all of our housing programs, we don't discriminate. Is there anything I would need to add to that, Corbin?
Is that, is this something you have to do every year? Is that, because I think we've done this in the past, haven't we?
We do it frequently.
Frequently, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
But every time you get a grant.
So this has to be done with every grant?
What, right, what happens is every time we get a new grant, they review the policies of the files and they decide that, well, there's something else that they need added to the, to the policy. And it's, it's usually clerical type of stuff and references and things like that. So it's just, it's just that they got to have, show that they have a job.
Okay. Can I?
I was about to explain, speaking as you.
Yes, sir, that's it. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
I think the last thing on our additions was just the recognition that we received the county of the quarter at the Florida Associations of Counties. And the plaque is down there at the other end of the diocese. But Columbia County is the county of the quarter. The county of the quarter, which means we use and take advantage of and participate in more Florida Association of Counties programs than any of the other counties.
And basically, we save the taxpayers money.
Save the taxpayers a lot of money by using their programs.
Thank you, David, for what you do to get to that point, to get that reward. So that's all we do, public comment at this time? Anybody come on up, man? Thank you for coming over.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Coffey-Kanone and I am a Columbia County resident. I'm also founder of a nonprofit corporation known as Abolish Abortion Florida. A little over two years ago, I requested that the county become a sanctuary for the preborn. And I am coming before you today to ask that the county become an advocate county for the preborn. You may or may not be aware that one baby is murdered by abortion in our state every six minutes around the clock. Last year, over eighty-five thousand babies were murdered in the state of Florida. This year so far, over thirty-three thousand babies have been murdered in the state of Florida, even with our fifteen week ban. The six week ban that has been enacted is a trigger ban that has not gone into effect yet. And even if it goes into effect, it merely regulates how, when, why, and where a baby can be murdered in the state. So my proposal and my request would be that Columbia County, Florida, become an advocate county for the preborn by adopting a resolution that would encourage the legislator to enact legislation outlawing all abortion from the moment of fertilization and providing equal protection and equal justice for every preborn individual by treating abortion with homicide laws that are already existing. Mr. Ford, you said it was the county's duty to protect its citizens. And you, sir, I forget your name, I'm sorry, but you said you hear constantly that we should have done this ten years ago, twenty years ago. This is something we should have done fifty years ago to protect the preborn. The Florida Constitution, Article One, Section Nine states that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. And Florida statutes, Section One Point Zero One, Part Three, states the word person includes individuals, children, firms, associations, joint adventures, partnerships, estates, trusts, business trusts, syndicates, fiduciaries, corporations, and all other groups or combinations. That clearly includes preborn human beings who are human from the moment of fertilization. And accordingly, I would request that the county become an advocate county for the preborn. Doing this will encourage the legislator to, legislature to enact legislation protecting every preborn human being. Thank you. I have literature and an example of a resolution that I could give the board if I'm allowed to do that.
You can give it to our, our county manager.
Okay.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Tricia Christensen, Everett's my commissioner. I have, I want to make a statement. I did come to the board and I thanked everybody for getting my, my ditch done at my residence. Aaron Brown and their crew did a super job and I really appreciated it. And I do have a green sign on my street. And if this, if these people are doing this subdivision and want them to take the over the road maintenance and everything, are they, are they putting in paved roads? Is this going to be something that's going to be easily managed? Or is this something that they're going to have to road, have the road scraper there all the time and that, that kind of stuff? I didn't quite understand that. It is? Okay, I'm done with that. Anyway, once again, thank you because they did come out and redo, they had to throw some, what they call that riffraff, prickfrack, something. Anyway, they had to do a little bit more on my bill. But it's done. It's done. Yeah, that, okay, anyway, they did that. So two times, but I think we're done now. And the water is not, the water's going worse supposed to now. Okay, the other thing I want to address, I'm concerned about this deal of the water, of the people that are getting this bill. Is this company not obligated to actually go out and read this meter and give an actual amount? And give a bill to these people each month? I mean, I'm sorry, if it was me, me and the P S C would have already had a big discussion about it.
Unless, unless there's a way to read a meter when you can't see it, and these are old meters. I know they don't have, I don't think it's computerized, but it may be. But I'm just saying, when I walk out there, I don't see a meter. I, I, I mean, there's some that have boxes.
So who's responsible for that meter? I mean, is the, is the homeowner supposed to be putting in the meter? Well, then why is, why is this company not being made to go out and put their meter in and read the damn thing every, excuse me, read it every month and give somebody a bill? And I'll tell you what, right now, I would not be paying that bill. We would have already, that's why I have my own well on my own property. I don't even want to deal with a water company.
And a water company don't want to deal with you. We might need to hire you to go out there and straighten all this. We need a water official. She's her.
But I didn't, it didn't even make sense to me. I mean, why would these people just fork out two hundred dollars a month? And not say anything? I mean, do we, do we need a more educated public? I'm done.
Kevin Kirby would be by your house after this. You and him are going to go handle it. You and Kevin will go handle that problem after this. Hey, she was charged with a B A for years.
Anybody, anybody else? Anything to comment?
New utilities director right there.
Yes, sir.
We're going to address the conversation that our staff had.
Are y'all, David, do y'all want to address that or y'all want to wait till the next meeting and have more answers, you think?
What is that about the idiot?
I think the best thing is for us to put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
There is some confusion about what was said last Thursday.
Yeah.
We know what our staff says, we know what the city says, and we need to
Yeah, let's, let's wait until we get more information on that before we air that out. Yeah, okay. All right, Commissioner, comment? Commissioner Williams, you got anything?
I'm fine. I just want to say on that water thing, I, I, I don't know why it's happening, what's happening, but I'm glad that we're going to take responsibility because it is ours. I'm glad you said that, Rocky. But I went out there and everybody knows what a water meter looks like and you can't see them. I don't, I don't know what's going on and hopefully we can get it straightened out.
I'm good to go today, I think.
Good. I, I just want to say one thing. I, I wasn't at the last meeting. I think y'all done a great job without me. But I just want to compliment Commissioner Hollisworth on the garbage contract. I thought you had really done your homework. I thought you, what you said was good. And I, I, I just want to compliment you for how you handled that because you, I think you done a great job with that.
And the attorney filled me in on it, he's the one that's really smarter than any of them.
Well, Joel, I want to congratulate you too, because like I say, I think y'all handled that well. And y'all brought some stuff to my attention that I had no idea about.
Well, Robbie's ruining my plausible deniability, so. But, but to your point, Mr. Chair, Mr. Hollisworth came to me and he asked the questions and it's it's the same thing I've always encouraged any of the five of you to do. If you're ever not clear on anything, that's what I'm there for. And so when you compliment him for doing his homework, he did.
Well, like I say, I thought y'all handled that well, and I agree with everything that was said.
The, David, the conversation me and you had the other day, how, have you reached out to the city and sent them a letter at this point or anything about our policy of background checks as to how it affects us at the Antimaddox Park?
I've not reached out to the city.
That, is the board aware of what happened the other night at the city council meeting?
Yes, I am.
Do we need a consensus on that, or what?
I think we put that on our next agenda, too, and let's talk about that while we're talking about the rest.
Well, just, just to let y'all know, Mr. Kraus did reach out to me about that question, Commissioner Murphy, and we did a long time ago, said, hey, we're going to adopt our policies, we're going to fix things. When y'all redid your sports league franchise, or license agreements, and when you redid your community center license agreements, you absolutely addressed that issue. And so, yeah, the, the policy of this board is that with respect to county-owned property where we potentially have children there, we require the background checks of anybody that's working with us. It's in your Antimaddox licensing agreement.
That's what I shared with the young lady.
The county has been clear. The county has been clear.
The young lady that called me from Antimaddox, and that's what I shared with her, and I said, well, you know, we got the policy. And she said, well, you know, I don't, where's the fence that the county enforces on this side and the fence on the other side? I said, this is going to get touchy. I said, I will bring it up publicly where to make you feel good, but I was totally unaware of what happened until I went back and listened at the meeting. And when I spoke to one of the councilmen, he simply said, I didn't vote on that. And I said, well, you better go check what you said, because you did vote on it.
So to be clear, the county's policy is we enforce background checks, and if you don't do them, we don't fund you.
David, anything to add anymore?
Well, yes. I promise to make it real quick. We had the regional, or the utility committee meeting yesterday, actually something you may want to talk about a little bit. We talked about the regional authority, which we're going to have a meeting on that 12th. But in addition, we're calling, we afterwards, we met with the town of Fort White, their attorney and our attorney, to talk about some of the confusion between the interlocal agreements and how they're working, and the fact that they're coming to a point where they need to be renewed. And so we're calling for a workshop with the county and the town of Fort White on August 11. Is everybody available that day?
I'm available. Let me expand on that a little bit. There's also a meeting on the 12th of this month. For, there's going to be multi-counties involved, coming over, got Swanee County, Union, Hamilton, Union, Swanee, and Baker coming over. And we're in discussions about a multi-county regional utility. Basically, a real regional utility. Everyone has expressed a lot of interest in this idea. And this second meeting, we had one meeting earlier just to see if there was any, anybody interested in doing this, and probably all of them are interested. As we all know, utilities are one of the most expensive things for any county to do. You've got, you've got three things that are really deal breaking for counties financially. You've got utilities, you've got landfills, and you've got jails. Lot of, lot of other places are doing these regional utilities. You've got the city of High Springs, Trenton, and Newbury talks about forming a utility right now together. Because, you know, you just, it's, it's just a way for us not to have to be financially responsible for all of it. You've got one basic utility, and it's big enough that you've got income coming in to support that utility. And I think, David, I think y'all got an email yesterday, I know I got my email yesterday, about all of the advantages of a regional utility. So that's kind of what we're in discussions about, and we also have a meeting, like David said, with the town of Fort White, a workshop with town of Fort White to discuss how we move forward with water sewer, about anything in the town.
That is at the TDC offices.
At the TDC.
This is August the 1st, David?
August 11th.
11th.
I believe it's at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, August 11th, 10:00 AM.
That's the workshop.
Okay, and that's for the multiple, that's for the multiple counties, correct?
No, the 12th of this month.
Okay, okay.
Like in five, what, it's five days now? That's the 12th of this month, and that's at TDC also.
Got you.
When, when will the meeting be with town of Fort White?
August 11th.
August 11th.
August the 11th, yes.
And that's going to be here?
No.
Both meetings are TDC.
Are, are we going to do any kind of free conversation with Fort White before that meeting?
We had one yesterday, and that's what made us decide we needed to have this meeting. We would have done it's...
About the regular meeting, or the meeting after the regular meeting yesterday.
After the utility committee, we had a staff meeting with the town of Fort White, their attorney, our attorney, Connie, and we just decided at that meeting, we needed to have a workshop to make sure everybody was on the same page, because there's confusion about the different interlocal agreements we have and how to enforce them and how to move forward, and what is, is the town's intention to stay in utility business with us, or is the town's intention to do something different? And just to kind of get all the rumors and innuendos that are out there on the table, and we all come to some sort of agreement on where we're moving forward.
And to shore up the interlocal.
Yeah, because we need to make sure we're not going into something with them, somebody that's not going to stick with us.
Well, and to make sure that if we're moving forward towards a regional utility, that we have the right agreements in place with the town of Fort White till we get to the regional utility, that the town of Fort White's on board with us with the regional utility.
Well, here's my problem. And I'm glad we're having this meeting, because I'm not going to change the spend money down there if they going to back out on us. Just I tell them. So it's good to have this meeting so we can clear the air, so we know where they're coming from, and they know where this vote is coming from. So that hit those same innuendos that everybody else is hearing.
That's how we started our meeting yesterday. We said, point blank, can we keep hearing these rumors? And the answer was, rumors are just rumors. We think we just need to have the boards talk to each other and air it out.
Well, with the other things happening along with those rumors that are happening right now with the green signs and the, I got a lot of, I got a lot of, I'm worried about it.
Well, I think that's, that's why it's good to have these, these meetings and let's address it, get everybody, and put the proper interlocal in place that needs to be in place, where both parties are protected.
Yep.
And here again, Mr. Fulmer, these interlocal agreements and all, I want some strong language put in there, in penalties or something, that if you decide you want out, it's going to cost you to get out. This county's not going to spend millions of dollars and go two, three years, and then they say, well, I, I think we don't want to do it on our own.
And it's, and it's kind of like Mr. Commissioner Hollisworth said a while ago, usually it's the county putting all the money in.
It's easy to back out when you ain't got no cheese in the deal.
Well, and as the board remembers, we entered into these interlocal agreements with the understanding that we were going to move to an authority.
Right.
And we just have not moved to the authority as quickly as we thought we would.
Oh, and, and that's another thing, David, glad you brought that up. The utility board voted yesterday to go ahead and get all the paperwork started, get our process in motion, form an actual regional utility, a standalone utility. Basically, it takes the politics out of it, it takes the Board of County Commissioners out of it, it takes the town of Fort White, and, and if Swanee County joins into it, it will take Swanee County Board of County Commissioners out. It would be an independent board that runs that utility.
When you say they voted to move forward on it, the, who's the attorney representing that board?
Grady Williams.
Yeah, the, the county's engaged a gentleman named Grady Williams, who facilitated the consolidation of Clay County's utilities a couple of decades ago. Very, very experienced in the area, and we've been kind of transitioning most of those higher-level utility questions strictly under his umbrella. But he's, he's, his, his marching orders, as far as I've ever heard, were to facilitate answering any and all questions related to creating that utility, whether it's countywide, whether it's regional, whatever the case needs to be.
So is he going to be bringing back a cost to us where we can all collectively?
And Mr. Williams, again, there were private utilities down in Keystone, there was Clay County's utilities, I think there was an Orange Park utility. He kind of helped marshal them into getting under a single umbrella, and he understands that that's a long-term objective for the county as well.
He has multiple years of experience.
Decades.
And there's several different ways you can do it, but he's going to recommend to you, he thinks would probably be our best approach to it.
Joe?
Are you finished? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you for the time. I just wanted to extend my thanks. I'm terrible at this. We had a terrible loss, and it makes me appreciative to live here. And I want to thank everybody who's held us up. And I'm sorry I can't get it out, but y'all know how I feel. So thank you.
I know exactly how you feel.
Your family's definitely in their prayers. It's a tragic situation, and we'll keep you in our prayers, that's for sure.
You know, and I'm just going to say, when you've got time to air yourself for it, you know it's coming, but it's in a distance like that. My brother was the same way. I got a call at 4:30, massive heart attack. It's like you, you don't have time to, don't have time to get ready. It's just a shock to your body. I know exactly how you feel. I'm sorry y'all going through this, and anything we can do, or anything I can do, I would be glad to help you with.
Just, again, it's, it's, it's been, it reminded me of why this is a great place to live, and I just want to publicly thank everybody. You find out who some friends are that you didn't know you had, and so thank you to everyone.
Anybody else got anything to say? If not, we are adjourned.